Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to reply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Motion for the executive minutes of October 13th, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all. It's been a short turnaround in between meetings since we had a Thursday meeting a week and a half ago. I don't have a whole lot of announcements outside of, I might be stealing some else's thunder, but I'll do it anyway. Congratulations to Detective Kenny Shannon and his wife Lisa on the arrival of their baby Kylie Reagan Shannon, who joins Sister Kagan. So that was on Sunday morning. Reports from committees, utilities, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Yes. I'll be with you in one second. Okay. Electric utility. They, you know, it always, just as an editorial note, it always amazes me how busy these groups are, knowing that there are very few employees in each operation, given what they managed to accomplish. So the electric department replaced a faulty pad mount transformer at the affordable housing complex in Community Place. They installed and transferred new poles on Ridgedale, Green Village, and Crescent Roads. They dug and reset two poles on Crescent. Crescent, as you know, has some construction going on, so I assume this is all related. There were street light repairs, service upgrades, and a number of mark out requests. As for the water department, we, I keep saying this, but I think it's worth repeating, we are in the midst of our mandated testing for various parts of water that we'd rather not see, and so far, so good. They've had 33 requests for locating and marking underground utilities. There was a new meter installed, a new curb box installed, and over half the hydrants, fire hydrants in town have been flushed and tested. So these are, you know, regular and routine things, but obviously clearly important to the good functioning of the borough. I have something else to talk about for a moment, aside from what I just gave as a report. The mayor said it would be okay to do it at this juncture. As you may recall, we approved Urbanomics to do a study for our downtown, in the revitalization effort for downtown generally. We met with them just a few days ago, and among the activities we'd like to initiate to start are focus groups. The focus groups would be small, we're talking six to a dozen people. They'd last about an hour and a half at most, and they would be made up of people who have something in common, whether they be businesspeople downtown, or homeowners, or involved in real estate. There'll be something that makes them a cohort group. What we're looking for are volunteers. We expect there'll be more volunteers than slots in these focus groups, so we're asking for volunteers, but don't be disappointed if you're not asked to participate, and it's going to be done randomly. Names in a hat, we'll pull them out, and that's who'll be invited to attend. But it would be very helpful if you would consider joining this effort. The more people involved at this point, I think the more successful it will be. If you are interested, please send your name and contact information to ddc@rosenet.org. That's the Downtown Development Commission at rosenet.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Cannelllo.
Your report, Mr. Mayor.
Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrigan.
Okay, just one announcement from Borough Clerk. Don't forget to vote on November 8th, it's election day. I do have a report from my other job, which is OEM, in its regards to the drought that we're going through right now. And I'm just going to read an excerpt from what I got from the County Office of Emergency Management. Just bear with me. The Department of Environmental Protection Commission of Barb Martin today passed, placed 14 counties encompassing northern, central, and other northern coastal areas of New Jersey under a drought warning due to the ongoing precipitation deficits and deteriorating water supply conditions. The designation enables the DEP to more closely manage reservoir systems by directing water transfers among the systems, controlling releases from reservoirs, and modifying the rate of flow in streams and rivers in order to balance ecological protection and the needs of water suppliers. The goal of the drought warning is to preserve and balance available water supplies in an effort to prevent a more serious water shortage in the future. The warning also elevates the need for residences and businesses to, business impacted, businesses in impacted counties to reduce their water use. We're going to skip ahead. It says, "The northern tier of the state, which we're included in in particular, has been grappling with a below-normal perception. In this area, precipitation deficits for the past 12 months are as much as 12.7 inches of rain. Reservoirs in these areas are as low as 50% of capacity when they should be closer to 100%." So the DEP is offering the following tips to reduce water use. One, at this time of year, it is appropriate to let your lawns go dormant. Two, turn sprinkler systems off automatic timers, don't use them. Use a hose with a handheld nozzle to water flowers and shrubs, or let them go dormant. Use a broom to sweep sidewalks rather than a hose. Wash vehicles with a bucket and do not run the hose more than necessary. To save water at home, fix leaky faucets, consider replacing your toilet with a loaf full version, which can save 11,000 gallons a year. Upgrade your showerhead, as this can save 7,700 gallons per year." They're taking this very serious because the long-term prediction is that the drought is going to get worse before it gets better. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Nittali.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, Madison Fire Department would like to thank all who attended the First Responder Day on October 16th. It was a very successful day for Fire Department, Police Department, and the ambulance squad. October's the month we teach and preach fire prevention. The Madison Fire Department has been visiting schools, seniors, and businesses to talk about and educate the public on fire prevention topics. As we move into leaf season, there's a reminder to all the residents, do not park on piles of leaves, as this may cause your vehicle to possibly catch on fire. As a side note, where's Ray? I noticed something the other day. Some of the landscapers are pushing the leaves already, and they're covering the fire hydrants. So we need to tell David to put that message out to all of those landscapers. This is a report from the Joint Court. The Joint Court continues to function very efficiently at its current staffing level of three full-time and one part-time employee. There are no operational issues, and we continue to remain within budget. Case load through September 2016 is slightly down from the same period last year. So in 2016, there's 13,127 cases that were heard downstairs. In 2015, it was 13,264. The total revenues are also slightly down from the same period last year. 2016, there's 585,000 versus 521,002 in 2015. As you know, we are in partnership with Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, Harding, Madison Borough, and Morris Township, and that is what constitutes the Joint Court. So Chatham Borough revenue was 88,400, Chatham Township is 45,976, Harding Township 41,611, Madison Borough 129,364, Morris Township 205,334. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. First, from the Madison Senior Center, for those who don't know about, 28 Walnut Street, the Senior Center, there's going to be an open house on Saturday, October 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There'll be demonstrations, cooking, movies, exercise, cider and donuts are planned, and the Drew Acapella Group. All of the above, and we'll give free performance. A local resident who wishes to remain anonymous has funded the purchase of a new computer and monitor, complete with Windows 2010 for public use. Seniors may use the computer during regular hours, and our RSVP care counselor is delighted with the update after struggling with an older computer originally purchased for the teen center. From the Downtown Development Commission, there's going to be a pumpkin illumination and trunk or treat event. This is presented by the Chamber, DDC, and the MVAC, Friday, September 28th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. First, you bring your carved pumpkin to the front steps of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Building, and pumpkins will be illuminated at 6:45 p.m. Then, enter your car in the first annual Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps Trunk or Treat. Come up with a creative theme and decorate the inside of your trunk. Parents, bring your children dressed in their costumes so they can trick or treat from car to car. Entering cars should anticipate a large crowd, so bring enough candy for all. Admission will be $10 per car, and you can reserve by contacting Diane Faustiggi at dianefastiggi@gmail.com. Walk-in trick-or-treaters will be asked to make a minimum donation of $2 per person. All proceeds from the trunk or treat will benefit the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Prizes will be given for best decorated trunk, and for scariest, cutest, and most creative. And the MACA and DDC Sidewalk Gallery, Gala and Auction is going to take place on Saturday, November 5th. The public is invited to join them at the historic Hartley Dodge Memorial Building at 6:00 p.m. for an opportunity to bid on each of the banners that you see downtown. This is the fourth year this public community project has been featured in Madison, and thanks to the successful partnership between the arts and cultural sector and the local government. Working together, the Madison Arts and Cultural Alliance, MACA, and the Downtown Development Commission, DDC, have created this public venue that promotes the creative work of local artists and identifies Madison as a premier arts destination. The auction is free to the public, and the preview reception, silent auction bids, and cocktail party with the artists at 6:00. At 7:00, we will move to the live auction portion of the evening, where further bidding on the artwork will be lively and exciting. And then from the Madison Chamber of Commerce, it's time for little spooks, some magic, and lots of trick-or-treaters. The Madison Chamber of Commerce is presenting the 2016 Halloween Parade and Magic Show on Saturday, October 29th. The event is sponsored by Sugar Rush, Mark Antony, and Dazzle Boutique. And the schedule of events, 12:15 is the Halloween Parade. The parade will begin promptly at 12:30 p.m. in front of Hartley Dodge Memorial. The parade will follow Kings Road to Green Village Road, on to Main Street, and will finish at the end of Waverly Place and Lincoln Place, where at 1:00 to 1:30, there will be the Joe Fisher Magic Show. And in case of rain, this show will be held inside the gym at Madison Junior School. At 1:30 to 3:00, there will be trick-or-treating. Children in costume are invited to trick-or-treat through the downtown business district. Participating stores will display a bright orange and black jack-o'-lantern in the windows. Madison Photo Plus will be taking pictures of children in costume at their location during the event. And that is all.
Nice busy time. All but works in engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, from Russ Brown at the Construction Department. He gave me a rundown of where we are year-to-date through Q3. Our permits and inspections performed have been up 15%. We've actually issued fewer certificates, but our revenue is actually up 60% year-over-year. So that's actually going to help us down the road with our ratables. The projects that are driving this work primarily are the KRE and Mark built buildings that are going up on the old GBR property. So far, the permitting's completed on Building A, but they've just started to receive the paperwork for Building B. And they've also just started to receive interior demolition permit work for the Alack building, which is also going to be another significant project for the department. And then from the DPW, just letting everyone know, leaf pickup has started today. It's that season. They've started, or rather, a contractor has started repair work on the pavers in the center of town, and they've started sewer cleaning again for the hotspots. That's my report for tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
And as a follow-up to engineering, we all wish Bob Vogel a speedy recovery. He was rushed to the hospital on Friday and has had heart surgery, stints. He is doing well, and so we all wish him a speedy recovery, and he's already, every minute he calls and says, "Wait a minute, I've got another thing I have to worry about." We're trying to have him relax a little bit. Dedicated, as always. Communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
I'm going to move the next section, which is the invitation for discussion. We only have one agenda item, so what we're going to do is we're going to go into that agenda item, and then I will open up the invitation for discussion after the council discussion, so the public may have a time at that point to comment after the presentation and discussion. As we move on to our agenda discussions, we only have one item, electric utility rate discussion, just to set the table a little bit. If I ever get around to writing a book on setting up meetings as a mayor, I would be a chapter on making sure you don't have a hot topic in the two meetings before an election. But we do have a very important topic, and it's, the reason we're having it right now is for a couple reasons. Last spring, this elected body made a promise that we would bring back after a summer experience with the somewhat volatile potential electric purchase and other things that could happen during the summer. So after we have the experience of summer under new contracts, we would discuss the rate structure. We also, the last couple of meetings, we had not been quite at full strength, missing a council member, or mayor, or a combination thereof, and so we are back at full strength. So we are going to take on this topic right now. What we will have initially is a presentation from our CFO, Jim Burnett, and I ask the council, just keep track of your questions to the very end, and then we'll have questions back to Jim, and then we'll have our full discussion. And then after the full discussion, I'll open it up to the public for any comments or questions. What our hopeful outcome for today is, because we will have three more meetings between today's meeting and the end of the year, is to return in the November meeting with an ordinance or ordinances based on today's discussion. Ordinance would be introduced, and then would have a second hearing. So as long as ordinances are introduced by the second meeting in November, action can be taken this year, as, again, this council said they would take action. So with that, Jim, do your, go through your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be as quick as possible. It's 29 slides, I apologize. It's up on Rosenet. It's...
Carmelo, do you want to move, or?
No, I'm all right.
Okay.
It's up on Rosenet. Here's a quick outline. We're going to talk about background, we're going to talk about rebate data, a proposed quarterly report that the mayor and council had asked for, that I finally put together, 2016 year-to-date results, and talk a little bit about market rates, and then we'll talk about electric rates and property taxes. So there's our power station, then and now. We don't actually generate power anymore, but that's the Madison Water and Light Station. As people probably know, it's why Madison became its own municipality, was to create its own electric utility and water utility. And actually, the first three ordinances that were ever created by the Borough of Madison were both, two of them were for the utilities. So I wanted to just go over some kind of basic background information first, just kind of get it out of the way. Some of these questions came from the various council members, just so we could have a better understanding of what's going on. This is the needs-based rebate, which has been in effect for three years. And 2016, we've had 326 applicants, and $48,900 has been distributed. That program, the amount was increased this year from 100 to $150. It's a needs-based program. You just fill out an application with the clerk's office, or at the electric utility billing department. The program's still open until December 1st, is that, until December 1st? So if you know anyone that's interested, it's something that's been well embraced. Hot summer, it has been an unusually hot summer. It'll show itself in some of the numbers, but I wanted to show some articles that 2010 still ranks as the hottest summer ever in New York City, and 2016 was just behind it. So some articles there that are a testament to that, and it will flesh out in the numbers that we show later on. Data collection, so trying to sum up the operations of the utility and be able to present it to council in a logical fashion, and to the public in a logical fashion, and then to be able to create quarterly reports that are feasible for the finance to create reasonably easily. Came up with four metrics that we'll use, basically the financial side, oh, hi, my wife's here. We'll come up with the financial side, and we'll come up with the kilowatt-hour side, or the kind of what's flowing through the meters. And so there are four different metrics. Monthly cash receipts, monthly power purchase costs, kilowatt-hours that we purchase, and kilowatt-hours that we bill. This information is still in draft form, but I think it's 99% good, and I'll go through it one at a time. I'm going to go through these quickly. There's going to be a lot of numbers in the next few slides, but then it'll get summarized in the quarterly slides, so I don't want, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of numbers on this slide here. Well, basically, if you come to the finance department any day, you'll see Frank and Magdalena doing deposits. They got a stack of envelopes about this big, they get online payments, and there's a deposit that's made. Every day those deposits are made, we have a docket that's a spreadsheet at the end of the month. That dollar amount is calculated, and that's what we have here. So for the month of January 2016, we had $1,564,000 on that spreadsheet. An easy, an easy piece of information for me to pull together. This bottom-line number here, if you're real persnickety, won't always line up exactly with our audit for a number of reasons. There's additional revenue other than the cash collections, someone that has a new connection, or other payments that come to the electric utility, interest on the bank account, and the like. So that number doesn't line up exactly, but it's very close, and it makes sense. As you look at this, you'll see quite a difference between 2006 to '09 and 2010, and that's because there was a rate increase in January of 2010. There's been no rate increase from then on. So from my standpoint, I've been kind of looking at 2010 forward for analysis. So the next is a single budget line item that we have. It's actually the single largest budget line item that the borough has in any budget, and that's the power purchase, what we actually buy. And that includes transmission capacity, block contracts that you've seen me promote in the past, and mention in the past. It includes fees to the Public Power Association of New Jersey. It includes fees that we pay to American Power Net that helps us process and go out to bid on contracts. So it's the largest single item, and I want to just point out real quickly here that, geez, Jim, you don't buy anything in January? No, that's not the case. We don't write any checks in January, because the January bill comes in, and it's not due until February. So the vast majority of the January bills are in February, February bill's in March, March in April, April run to May. What ends up happening, and we'll talk a little bit more about this later, is at the end of the year, that budget line item does not get wiped out. It gets put aside into what's called an appropriation reserve. It sits in that appropriation reserve for another year. And that is where, in January or February, when we're getting our last bills coming in, we'll make those payments. So because of that, you'll see clearly that December gets inflated, and I wrote December plus here, because it's really December of that year, plus the entire following year, where any expenses can flow through that. They have to be legitimate expenses from that prior year. So I just wanted to point that out. The next is we're going to switch from the financial side to the metering of the electricity. So I found a nice little chart on the internet, and it shows power plants. You know, we do get power from nuclear, but we don't get any from coal, I don't think, so just disregard the little coal pile there. I don't want anybody to get nervous. But the power is generated at the power station, it's transmitted along national transmission lines, and it goes to our substation. We have two substations. At our primary substation, there's actually a meter, and that meter is monitored by JCP&L and by PJM, which is the grid, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland grid. And that meter has increment data every 15 minutes, and that's what that little meter there represents, that there's a single meter measuring the amount of kilowatts, kilowatt-hours that are flowing through the substation. So with that, here's that chart. Again, I don't want you to, there's a lot of numbers to look at, don't worry about it. We are missing a number in 2010. We've been going through the archives to try to find that, but that does throw off the bottom-line numbers in 2010 on this chart. But this is the monthly kilowatt-hours that flowed through our substation of what we bought. The next kilowatt, and the fourth metric of the four metrics that we're going to talk about and measure, is the kilowatts that we billed. And this is what Jay and, there's a picture of Jay right there. Wish him well. He's not been, he's been out sick for a little while, but Jay, hope you feel better soon. But this is actually when Jay and Jim and the meter readers go around and read the meters. Now, every home, or the town is broken up into 28 books, 28 books for 28 days, and every day, the meter readers try to accomplish reading one book. They have water and electric to read, but they'll read that book. So if I'm in Book 5 on Woodcliff Drive, my meter is getting read on about the 5th of the month. So if it's being read on the 5th of the month, that's going to take, for example, we use December and January. If it's on January 5th, it's being read, and it's showing up here as a January number, it's actually showing my consumption from December 6 until January 5th, when we read it, because we're only reading one time. Down the road, hopefully before I retire, when we're fully automated meters, we'll be able to look at this in a completely different way. But for now, we have feet on the street with pad and paper, soon handheld gun, and we'll, so it's right now the only way we can measure it. So with that, these are the numbers here. If you're really interested in looking at it, these numbers here are a little lower than what comes into substation, and Rob can probably explain it better than me, being an electrical engineer, but there's line loss from when the power gets stepped down from a primary, from the transmission to the primary, to the secondary, through transformers. And if we, we've talked about in the past, some of our meters maybe not being as calibrated perfectly. So there's a little bit off there, but it makes sense. And we actually report that every year to the federal government. We report what comes into the substation and what we're measuring on an annual aggregate basis. So what we wanted to do, and this is where we'll give the council quarterly reports, still kind of like, kind of want to glass over, because there's so many numbers here, but this is, what I'm proposing is a quarterly report, and it'll just be two pledges. One will be financial, one will be kilowatt-hours. And so I summed up and just made it quarterly instead of monthly, just to reduce the numbers on the page, and then I'll be able to come to you and say, for the first quarter of 2016, we had cash receipts of 5.2 million, and that is almost dead-on to what we had the previous year, a little bit lower than what we had actually any other year except for 2010. And council will be able to see that. If you actually look at the first two quarters, and I just did that as a highlight, imagine if I was here in July giving you this report for only the first two quarters, you'd see that through the first half of the year, the utility really was in line or below any of the prior years. It wasn't until the very hot summer, remember that article I showed you about the hot summer? It wasn't until the very hot summer where we had a real big change in our total numbers. And you can see here, it was almost a million dollars more than prior year, and you've got to go, you go all the way back. It's higher than, higher than any single quarter on the chart there. So what we can now do is, is track how much money's coming in on this through our deposits and through this report, and in the bottom section, we can track what our power purchase costs are. And I think, I've said it enough times, but I think I probably need to continue to say it forever, that we're in a different type of contract than we used to be a number of years ago. We used to have a full requirements contract, we knew what the kilowatt cost was, and that was it. Now, we've separated out transmission, we've separated out capacity, we're buying block contracts, and then we actually go into the market on an hourly basis, and this is where American Power Net helps us. We go into the market on an hourly basis and either buy or sell, and then after the fact, true up, because we don't really know how much we're going to consume until we actually consume it, off of the contract. So right now, for this hour, hour ending 9:00 p.m. on this day, we may have bought 17.2 megawatt. megawatt hour, megawatt hours, megawatts for the hour. If we needed to buy 17.5, we went out in the market and bought it at spot. That's a risk, we don't know what that spot market's going to be, it's been unbelievably soft. It's been the softest it's been in, you know, in a very long time, so those costs have been suppressed. We don't know over the course of time if they'll stay that way, so, so with that, we can't ultimately predict with certainty what our contractual costs are. So, but this report shows us actually what's spent, actually what's going, and it says from Edmonds, that's actually our, our payment system, our accounting system, and it actually shows what money is going out, and that's a relatively easy number for me to get, so I can get the deposits from Frank up top, and I can get the money going out the door from Edmonds and be able to give you a relatively easy quarterly review, and you can see that from a cost standpoint, we were really pretty close to the estimates here, and all along the way. So it looks like we're going to be coming in at those estimates, which is a good thing. Then, real quickly, just the kilowatt hours, and I'm not going to bore you with that, but if you look back at it, you can see where there are hot quarters, where there are cooler quarters, and, but what, but what's interesting to see is that it is relatively stable, even though if we went on a monthly basis and saw one January versus another January, another August, one August to another August, over the course of the year, the amount that we are consuming and billing is relatively stable, and this, we've got the first and second quarter here, I mean, from 62 million to 67 million kilowatt hours, that's, it's really a pretty tight band. So, and it shows both what's going through the master meter, that's this top chart here, and what's Jay and Jim Trimble and those guys are writing down in the books, and what Donna's billing, and what's being measured on your individual homes meter on a monthly basis. So that's, that's what I'm proposing to council, to be a quarterly, the format of a quarterly report going forward, so any-
Can I ask a quick question about an anomaly? In 2010, it says we billed more than we received.
That is, in 2010, it says we billed more than we received.
The bottom is, well, we billed, it says 135 million.
So some of that may be just that, that lag, Pat, that we talked about, that since we don't line up exactly, as I said, this is draft too, so I do want to go, oh, you know why? Remember, I said there was that missing data for 2010? We're missing a whole month of 2010 here. So because that number's not there, if I threw in an estimate of about 11 million, it would, good catch, Pat, I did see that, if I threw in an estimate of 11, you'd see that that number would go up to about 100, this number here would go to about 142, and then it would make sense.
So I'm going to write down the word lag, because that's something we're going to have to discuss.
Yep.
Okay.
But in this particular instance, it's not lag, it's the fact that-
You know, I understand that.
-you can't find that particular number. I'm going to go get a glass of water, too. From Lehigh to Purdue, go Boilermakers.
Traitor.
So, bear with me here, proposed quarterly reports. Another number with a lot of charts, but I, but this is really going to be the one that ultimately we're going to talk about for potentially multiple council meetings, this is the performance of the electric utility. This report, the bottom section of this report, almost mirrors a page in our audit. And we're really bored, it's the E1 page, it shows fund balance or the generation of surplus, and the top section shows surplus, the bottom section shows the performance of the utility, and a couple of anomalies that are due to municipal finance, the way this works, we post actual revenues that come in, but we're not posting on this particular schedule, actual expenses. Why don't we do that? Remember, if I told you, we have a budget, and at the end of the year, we take the extra of whatever that budget is in appropriations, and put it into the appropriation reserves, that allows us to pay the bills the following year. At the end of the following year, that money gets canceled, it's called canceled appropriations, and it shows up on this schedule. So it's really important to notice, that's a real, you know, snoozer unless you're an accountant, no offense to anyone in the room, Tom, but actual revenues versus budgeted as expenses, here's the cancellation of prior year appropriations, line seven. So it's, it's just important to know that, and, and I think we're going to talk a lot about that over the coming, over the coming weeks. That really shows how good a job did the CFO do in estimating expenses? And this is my first rodeo with, with doing the electric utility, and so bear with me if I'm going to be a little maybe more conservative, but, you know, I, I think we, I need to have a goal that that line seven doesn't get to be over a million dollars, that that line seven should be in the 600 to 700. This year it's going to be 900, but I'm blaming that a little bit on Robert, because that's really 2015 appropriation reserves that are lapsing, but, but in any event, so, so that's something that's really important to kind of understand. So here we have, at the bottom section, we have our cash collections, how much Frank did in deposits, interest, their connection fees, we have miscellaneous revenue, we have the cancellation of appropriation reserves, that's kind of money coming in, filling the bathtub, and then money going out the bathtub is all the expenses. We used to have a single contract, now we have a contract that has all these different lines broken out, capacity, transmission, spot. In addition, admin and operating, that's Mike Piano and all his men and all his costs, and Pat had asked a question, how much capital is embedded in there? In terms of actual dollar line items, there's about $120,000 that Mike has, where he buys nuts and bolts and wires, and not big, not big transformers and things like that, but, but of that, it's that amount. I could argue that every man hour he has goes to capital to maintaining the system, but, you know, that's just a theoretical debate. And then finally, how much gets dedicated to the electric utility for capital? That amount gets decided at the beginning of the year, it gets taken out of the operating account, put into the capital account, as you all vote on ordinances, to spend it, it gets spent. So at the end of the year, there is the generation of surplus, fund balance, but almost everybody calls it surplus, and that's what this bottom line number is here, going across here, that's the total surplus that's generated. What then happens is we have the surplus account, which we're summarizing up here, and there's the surplus at the beginning of the year, then there's how much that gets transferred to the municipal budget, and I've said this before, but I'll continue to say it, that's been going on since the 1940s, as far back as I could see, I couldn't find any documents any earlier than that, but there's municipal, utility surplus that was being transferred over to municipal operations as far back as the 1940s. So you have your balance at the beginning of the year, which includes all the profit or surplus you made the prior year, then you have how much you took out, how much was generated in the current year, and then the balance at the end of the year, and it, it just rolls from year to year. So if you see, this number 4683 here is the balance at the end of the year for 2011, but it's also the balance at the beginning of the year for 2012, 5375, 5375, 6322, 6322. So that's how it works. I think a lot of what council will look at, and we've talked about this in the past, is how much surplus is generated versus how much is utilized in the municipal budget. Two very important things, the municipal budget portion probably talked about in January, February, but you can just sit here and look at these two numbers and say, 6.2 was utilized, 7.8 was generated, 3.7 was utilized, 4.6 was generated, and there are years like here in 2009 where we used more than we generated, in 2008 where we used more than was generated. That's obviously not sustainable, we're taking money out of the account. And so with everything else being equal, I'm anticipating surplus to grow. If we don't change anything, if we don't do anything, if we don't do a dividend or a rate cut or anything else, surplus is going to grow. I've, I've put new estimates out, now that I have three quarters of a year of data, it is not going, we're not going to generate 22.3 million in revenue from the electric utility, which is what I had originally estimated in March, we're going to generate probably $800,000 or more, based on the receipts that Frank and Donna and those guys are pulling in every day. So that number is, is going to be higher, that is driving, that along with a higher than I had initially anticipated lapsing appropriation reserve, remember I told you I was blaming it on Robert for this year, but trying to get this number in the 600 to 800 range, it looks like it's going to be closer to nine to a million, those two things have increased surplus off, off the original estimate. The original estimate was 8 million, 8,114, and it looks like it's going to be 9 million plus. So I put a low and a medium and a high, and I did that because we have another quarter to go, and I don't know, to be honest with you, what it's going to look like, we can guess, but I feel pretty confident it's going to be medium. So, Mr. Catalinella.
Thank you, Jim. So we spoke about this briefly outside, and since we're on page 14, when you look at the increase in line nine and the increase in line 10, which are expenses, there is a significant increase from 2016 to 2018 in capacity, of approximately 30% over two years, and on the transmission side, there's about a roughly 50%. The dollar total looks to be around five, what's that, 500, around $750,000 increase just in capacity and transmission. It seems unprecedented, and it also seems as though the increase in cost more than cancels out the decrease in our, the increase we, of course, we pay, more than cancels out the lower price we're paying for electricity. That seems uncanny, and I'm wondering, you know, you said they were estimates, but they seem to be extremely conservative.
So transmission is an estimate, capacity is a known number, capacity, they have auctions for the, and the first auction for the capacity has already occurred, the number's locked in, there'll be a couple of true up-
For 2019, for 2018?
2018, yep.
Okay.
So, so that number's kind of a locked in and-
725 is locked in already?
No, no, the capacity, which is line nine, which is-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nine, three.
Sorry, 2.93, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, the transmission number is going up-
I'm blind.
The transmission number's going up 30%, from 552 to 725 is about a 30% increase, and in talking to our rate council, Jill Barker, and in talking to the executive director of the Public Power Association of New Jersey, and Brian Veda, we feel that transmission costs are going to go up, but that requires action from the company and action to go through the Board of Public Utility. The company, JCP&amp;L, is in the process of trying to sell its transmission assets and separate them out, and Park Ridge, do I have, do I have this on here somewhere? Talk about Park Ridge's-
Yeah, you did.
Somewhere on there.
Yeah, there was, it's the one town, so, so-
Oh, I have it in a couple of slides.
It's, it's safe to say that, so even though they're listed as estimate, that they're actually locked in, the capacity costs?
Capacity's going to be very close, there are going to be-
It is locked in.
-some adjusted auctions, but that's locked in, and, but transmission is more of an estimate.
Try to keep flowing-
Thank you.
-capture that thought, and let's, I know you, I think you've-
Okay.
-Park Ridge coming up.
So, I think Pat mentioned, someone mentioned, free balance. Free balance is how much we have in the electric utility after we utilize the surplus for that year in the municipal budget. 2010's a good place to look, where we had an ending, a beginning balance on January 1st of 2,700, we used 2,600, we had 62,000 left in, in surplus to be ready to be used the following year. I think it makes sense to have some sort of number and have some sort of discussion on that. Right now, we're utilizing $1 million of the electric utility in the municipal budget for operating, so if for some reason the electric utility didn't perform, we wouldn't have that money in reserve, and we'd have to take pretty aggressive action pretty quickly. That's a-
No, no, that's-
-debatable decision for-
Aren't we using more than a million? The debt, debt service-
Well, I'm saying operating, so we have capital, debt, and operating, and we split it out on our budget in three lines, and the one line that we just say is operating is about $1 million.
But the debt service is entirely covered by, by electric utility, too?
Correct, yes, debt and capital, and you could argue that capital is a number-
So 100% of capital is also being covered by debt ser, by electric utility?
What's that?
100% of capital is being covered by the electric utility?
I have to take a look at it, Rob, I think there was some capital fund balance and some other things, but we've got it on here, we can take-
Yeah, as we get through, we'll get back.
So, so here's just a chart showing free balance, which is basically how much is left over in surplus, is basically line one minus line two up here, not to put anyone to sleep, but that's what free balance is, and this is free balance as a percentage of the municipal budget, here's the municipal budget. I'm just showing it to show you that we used to have more than we do now, whether that's right or wrong, I don't think we, 20% is not right, I don't even think 15% or even close to 10% is right, but I think we need to have not $62,000 like we did 2010. So I just point that out, in 2015, $263,000, only 1%, I think we need to have, I think you need to have a good substantive discussion on that, that might take some time. So I put there, should the borough create a strategic planning guideline for electric utility free balance?
But Jim, you're saying that at the end of this year, we're going to start the year with 2.9 million free balance?
Yep, no, we're starting the year with 9 million in surplus.
No, when you, you're, when you exit this year-
Did you say 2.9, what did you say, Pat?
At the bottom, you say on January 1st, when we're done taking out the money for the electric utility, for the proposed transfer of 7.2 million, we'll be left with 2.9 million on January 1st.
Oh, I saw, I said 9 million, yeah, 2.8, 2.85, 9 million, yeah, so there's, you know, with everything else being equal, surplus estimate, generation is estimated to climb, absolutely, that's what it said in the previous slide, so, that's what it says right here, so, and this is what Pat's talking about, if people don't know, that's, he's talking about that number there, and that's really the number that is at least a starting point to talk about how much is enough, and do we want to have a dividend or a rate cut or alike.
All right, so as I look at this, it seems to me that you've, you, we have a good handle on most of the expenses, we have an equally good handle on revenue, there is volatility in both of those, although not extreme, but nevertheless, they're not constant. The one that stands out is free balance, and when you indicated we're going to have some long discussions about it, do you have any ideas on free balance that might make those discussions shorter? I mean, if, we need some guideline here to start the process.
I, I, I would be concerned if we didn't have at least $1 million in free balance going into next year, if we're continuing, using, project using $1 million in, in operating.
Jim, so if free bal-
I'm sorry, could you, could you say that one more time, I didn't quite catch-
I would, I would, I'd absolutely be concerned if we didn't have at least $1 million in free balance, because if we're utilizing, if we know in 2018, we're going to utilize $1 million, or at least we're anticipating in the budget to utilize $1 million, should, should we at least have that reserved? You know, the council has in the past and can take it all the way down, but I, I wouldn't be comfortable with that, I wouldn't suggest that, but I will also say this, my, my estimates are conservative, I'm going to continue to estimate, I'm going to continue to estimate 22s, even though we did 23 million here, and 23 million here, and 23 million here, because we did 22 million this year, we did 22 million this year, we did 22 million this year, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to go to the average, my, 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 my revenue estimates will always be towards the lower side.
Yeah, so, so having said that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I want to just, we're kind of drifting back and forth into discussion and questions, so if it, just try to keep it to questions, we're almost through Jim's presentation, then we'll be ready for full discussion.
Okay, I can wait, I'll wait.
Okay, so why don't I, I'll try to get through it all, and I think we're going to come back to page 14 probably.
Oh, yeah.
So this shows free balance, transmission costs, Park Ridge is in a different distribution zone than we are, a different node than we are, but they do pay six times the amount that we pay in transmission costs. We just pay an amazingly low amount, and everyone that's out there is saying the reason JCP&amp;L wants to divest the assets is so they can get a better rate of return, and whoever buys it can come in and start increasing transmission costs. So that's why I'm anticipating it, but there's, it's, it's an estimate, it's a conservative estimate. I do think, you know, I would wager, I wagered with you a few times, Mr. Catalinella, I would- would, I would wager that transmission costs will certainly be going higher over the years.
Jim, is, is that regulated by the BPU?
You know, I have to find out how that whole process works. You and I talked about that on Friday, and I think it's something that they have to go in front of the Board of Public Utility.
So they'd have to justify any rate increase?
Correct, yes.
And do we know what our, not competitors, our peers, other than Park Ridge are paying? Are they in the same ballpark as us, Park Ridge?
Four of them are in Park Ridge's world, and four of them are not. And then I think Vineland may be in Atlantic City Electric Distribution.
So everybody within the JCPenney distribution network gets roughly the same price?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, our contract portfolio, just real quickly, I'd like to show this to everyone. This is the way the investor-owned utilities purchase. This is the way we purchase. We had a great purchase here. Thank council for giving us the authorization to make that purchase. This contract here and this contract here were really good contracts that have allowed us to kind of lock in at very low rates, and that's going to help us in the out years. Current electric rates, we just got this, it says here yesterday, but it's not yesterday. We got it on Thursday when I put this together, that JCPenney was announcing a 6.8% rate increase. They're going in front of the Board of Public Utility, and this is a notice that they've given us that says they're going for a 6.8% increase. Current electric rates, you know, I've been thinking about this more just over this past day, and I think we need to dive deeper into this. Rob asked for commercial rates in the past. The executive director of the Public Power Association of New Jersey said, "It's so complicated, I can't do it." But I found a consultant that we've worked with in the past, Paul Williams, who's helping us on generation, who said, "I can do it." It's not the easiest, but if we can just sit here and pick a business or, or someone else, we can sit here and do an analysis of, of the commercial side. But this chart here shows an analysis that was done with Martin Barbado and the Strategic Planning Group that worked in 2014. It's been updated to show existing rates. Some rates, like South River, went up. Some rates went down, and it shows, and it's broken down into three groups. Martin's committee had kind of identified three different groups to kind of compare us to. There are five municipalities, including Madison, that use surplus from the utility to transfer into their operating for their municipal budget, to help pay for DBW or sewer, or whatever, police, whatever they're, whatever they're paying with that, those dollars. There are five that do not. Butler, Lavalette, Park Ridge, Sussex, and Vineland, they do not. And then there are the investor-owned utilities that have a desire to have a return for their stockholders, and that's Atlantic City Electric, JCPenney, PSENG, and Rockland. So this just gives you some indication of where Madison's rates are compared to these two areas. And Martin's group, when they analyzed it, they said, "It really makes no sense to look at a municipality that purposely doesn't take surplus out. Madison's done it that way for 70 years." So we're going to kind of put Butler off to the side, but it does make sense to compare us to Milltown, Pemberton, Seaside, South River. And so he kind of had two groups that he thought, that his group thought we should compare ourselves to. It was the municipalities that use surplus for tax relief and the investor-owned utilities. And in the investor-owned utilities, it was decided to exclude JCPenney because they just have such, or such poor service. We all saw it during Hurricane Sandy, where one side of the street in Madison had electricity on either Shun Pike or, what's that road over by, where Ernie Secconi used to live, off of Greenwood Avenue where one side is.
Is that a circle?
Yeah, in, in that area there, just past there, there's a road where on one side, they're served by an investor-owned utility on the other side. And people were like trying to string power cords from the Madison residence to the Flora Park residence because they were out for two and a half weeks. And so Martin's group said, "JCPenney is too much of an outlier." BPUs even said that they won't let them change their rates unless they're dedicating those revenues from those rates to increase reliability.
One question, how is Butler so low?
How is Butler so low?
They don't even outlier amongst their peers.
What's that?
Even amongst the ones who don't use money for tax relief, they're 15% below everybody.
Are they BPU regulated because they sell across? They are BPU regulated, which really trims any, any excess. Lavalette, Sussex, they might have a little bit of money in there that ends up kind of, maybe 25% of their DPW superintendent is paid out of it or something like that. And, and they do sell out of their area, which is why they're regulated by the BPU. I'll ask, I've never really dived into that, to be honest with you. Sussex Rural buys completely differently than the rest of us do. They buy through the Allegheny Cooperative. They actually have a percentage share of a nuclear power plant in Pennsylvania that provides electricity for them. So they're kind of a whole different way they operate. Vineland also, we've talked about them in the past, they just nailed the solar down there. They had huge swaths of land that were available that the municipality owned, and they did a power purchase agreement for solar at like four cents a kilowatt hour. They did that when the solar renewable energy credits, SRECs, were really high. Now they're not anymore. They still get three cents, the company, instead of getting their investment back in seven years, it's taken them like 20 years to get that paid back.
But I would be interested, because they're even cheaper than JCPenney, and it just seems like maybe we can learn something from them about how they.
Yeah.
They're not, they're probably bigger than we are, but they don't have that much economy scale, big power company, or even Sussex Electric.
I'll find out, I'll find out. Hopefully it's right. I got my numbers right there. Check. Just to move along, because I don't want anybody to fall asleep on me here. Electric rates versus taxes, we've talked about this in the past, and we've talked about it kind of at a very esoteric level when Martin was discussing it during strategic planning. But you've heard it before, you'll hear it again, the top 50 electric customers are all non-residential customers. They represent 40% of the total revenue, so the top 50 customers are 9 million, and Drew being number one at 1.8 million just for them alone. The electric utility brings in 22.8, 23 million a year. That's 2015 numbers. The top 50 property taxpayers, I hate to say there are actually a couple residences in that line, in those lines, just a couple, but, actually CFO I think is great. But the top 50 property taxpayers represent only 13%. There really is quite a shift in terms of customers in electric versus the property taxpayers. So the following chart shows, I didn't tell Sarah.
Jim, can I ask you one question? In the top 50, how many of those lines belong to the Board of Ed or the borough?
I don't know, I can look it up. Could be a dozen.
Okay, so, I mean, those are being supported by taxpayers one way or the other?
Mm-hmm. And that's, so people understand, the Board of Education, buildings, the wells, and the like. Board of Education is getting the, the rate that was recently decided earlier this year, that they're now getting the rate that is the very, for the very highest consumer, which is Drew and the single largest building that we have in Gerald, the old Pfizer building. So Sarah, sorry, I put our house information up there, but this is my house, this is Ray's house, this is the average home, and these poor people don't know that I've picked their home, but it's the, I know you asked me to put yours up too.
No, I said if you're going, you have to put my, my tax bill up there.
I know, I know, but.
Why did we? We wouldn't, of course, include anyone that didn't pay the highest rate. So the difference would be around, what, a million dollars? Maybe a little less because we're not going to cut it for Board of Ed, not going to cut it for the biggest user. We, it seems as though we have enough free cash to cover the cut and still leave the million dollars you were talking about. So why would we have to raise taxes?
We don't have to.
Let's, that is a.
That's actually addressed later on.
Okay.
But this is just, because, you know, we talked so. Taxes are deductible. Versus electric rate. And so. So, but I just wanted to show that in some instances, it's kind of close, with Ray being, you know, the change in taxes versus change in electric. Me, it's a little bit more of a spread. The average home, they do a good job with their electricity. I know they have such a little electric bill. But, but anyway, that was impressive. So here's our municipal budget. This is just to kind of talk about what I talked to Rob about, which is there's three lines that we identify on there that fund capital, and those are right here, they're the yellow shaded lines, not fund capital, it's three lines from the electric surplus that are used for operating, the debt service and capital. Just wanted to throw that in there in case we needed it. This is, this is five-year capital plan. It's really the 2017 numbers from last five-year capital plan, just to remind everyone, we've got a big ask coming for capital, big ask coming for capital.
Thank you for the clarification there.
Big ask coming for capital. That's just a reminder there, and it really doesn't look like it's diminishing. It looks like it's going to be four years, or four million or more, to five million a year for the next five years. This is a chart that I'd just like to show because there certainly has been a lot of discussion about trying to keep property taxes low. I know Landigan has made it important to him. He's my financial liaison, so I certainly listen to him, and I was happy to see that over the three-year period, that property taxes for this average home, 667,000 assessed value, only went up $6.67. And I'll be honest with you, I was surprised when I did this calculation too. Not think it was going to be this extreme, but when, at least it allows me, when people come to me and say my property taxes are too high, I can say what Ben said a couple years ago, you should, you may go to the Board of Ed meetings.
Do you know what the average spend is? If you look at the, so what I mean by that is, if you look, and you, and you look at the average home, so how much, how much are we spending for the average home? And how has that grown since 2013?
Oh, okay, I understand what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I can look into that. I haven't looked at, but I can look into that. So what Mr. Catalinella was pointing to.
24 million to about 30 million?
Yep.
Over those three years? So clearly the $6.67 per average house doesn't cover that.
Correct, correct, and that's the.
So I'm just trying to get a handle on just exactly how exposed we are to the utility surplus, electric.
Correct.
That's what I'm asking.
And we can, we can do that. We can compare 2013 to 2016 on the municipal. We weren't doing, I think, if I had to guess, I'd say a million dollars. So. Seeing Ridge Dale Avenue get paved, you're seeing all these roads that hadn't been paved getting paved, that, that need work, Prospect, work started there, Greenwood Avenue, Central Avenue, all these roads are either on the pipe to get done or have been done in recent years. So, but we can certainly, you know, we can have multiple conversations about this. We can certainly talk about that. Borough services, this is on the little budget summary that was passed out. I had to laugh when my wife, when I went home and Sarah said, "There's this really great thing in the electric bill, did you have anything to do with it?" I don't know. I don't think we've talked enough about what I do. But anyway, this is a chart that shows the per-person municipal tax in our, every town that we border, and the services that are provided. And as we've talked about many times before, Madison is a high-service community. People get a lot for their tax dollars, in my opinion.
Question on this, if we were to reflect in this table, how much the average taxpayers' electric bill covers this? Because we've admitted that a good chunk of our electric bill is in lieu of municipal taxes. What would the numbers really look like?
Yeah, I mean, we could, whatever you want to, whatever you want to show.
No, question.
Have we ever?
No, but I mean, right now, about 30 cents of every dollar that we take in the electric utility gets used as surplus in the municipal budget, actually more. So if you took, what's the average household pays about $1,700 a year in electric? So 30% of 1,500 is over $500. So if we added back in $500, that would significantly change our position on this chart. And that would probably give a true reflection of what it's costing to run the borough from a combination of the municipal taxes plus the money you pay through the electric utility.
But think of the resident that lives in a PSENG service area, which is not that far from us. I know JCPenney.
No, 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 we're comparing.
So anyway, to think about that.
We're comparing them, but we're comparing the people who live next to us to JCPenney.
And you can say that we have better service than they do, but if you're going to truly say that this is what it costs to run the community, or to run this municipality, I think it's fair to say, to throw that in there and not try to pretend that that doesn't exist.
So you're, Pat, just to clarify, you're extra, adding a column to this chart, which is just the 2015 per-person municipal budget. So the total budget spread over the, over the, the challenge there is that the other towns have other sources.
Well, we don't have other sources of revenue. We're unique in that we can move money from the electric utility, and we can move a lot of money.
Well, it's, it, you know, I did do an analysis.
I take that back. I didn't realize it said per person, so I'm wrong when I say 500. It should be one-third of that, should be more like 170, 180.
So, I mean, we can certainly look at that, but then we've got to look at Chatham Borough where you, where there's a sewer charge. Chatham Borough has 8,000 residents and a couple million dollar sewer charge.
Approaching the presentation.
Applicate funds. I have two questions for you, and then I have just one statement. So let me start with this statement. I think I'll remember the questions. The statement is that in effect, we own this utility. So whatever monies go into the budget off the utility is a dividend. We are owners, we get paid a dividend. So our taxes for a high level of services tend to be lower than our neighbors. We found that out when we did the analysis over time for the Budget Committee. It's not as if the money goes in a black hole and disappears, it gets spent. And the reason the budget went up as dramatically as it did over the last several years is because there were several years, as you know, where there was little to no surplus, and there was little to no capital improvement. And we suffered through what I think people like to call deferred maintenance. To us, it meant busted streets and broken water pipes. So it's not as if, you know, the implication of your question is almost as if to say we're trying to hide something. I view it quite the opposite. It's been very transparent. And the reality is that the electric utility does in fact generate dividends. We get them in a very arcane way. We get them in the form of services. The questions I have for you, Jim, is just very quickly. I know it's hard to predict, but we look like we're having a wonderful year. Thank you, Electric Utility, and thank you, Jim, for doing a great job in figuring out how to pay for the stuff and take advantage of down markets. How much, I mean, we're here trying to figure out how much money to give back to our residents in one form or another, assuming there is money to do that. How much would you estimate now based on how things are going? And I know you've got three months to go, but I just want to have an idea of what, what we're talking about.
So the question is how much you think should be given back? Or the question is what do I think the performance of the utility will be?
Well, it's both. Well, it's both, because depending on what you think the utility is-
I think we hit the medium for sure, which is why the original documents that I was sharing with Pat didn't have-
One, I think we're, it's, we all want to go in a direction that puts money back in our residents' pockets, whether it's through a dividend or through rate adjustments. So let's make sure we understand that. I think before we jump to that discussion, you need to have this discussion as to what do you need to hold back to make sure we're secure. So we had the discussion of free balance level. The, yep, and the estimate on collections, which is a variable, that if you estimate low and collect high, you have this cushion that can be given back in a way. In reverse, if you estimate high and collect low, you're in trouble. But the, so the free balance recommendation from the CFO was a million dollars. Is there any thought that that is out of line, or is that reasonable?
Yeah, I'll address that now, because I was good boy, I waited till the end with my questions. I got a bunch here.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Get your questions, yeah, thank you, Bob.
Okay. The free balance number, I'll start with that, because that's one of the pages I have flagged. If you want to come up with a number, use Hurricane Sandy as an example. I'm assuming that the free balance was used to pay for the needed repairs, and we didn't have to bond for them, correct?
That's correct. And it was about a million-
So that storm cost us roughly $2 million. And the likelihood of a storm, yeah, it did, because I negotiated with FEMA and I got back 1.2 million. So a free balance of about $2 million, give or take a couple hundred thousand either way, would prepare us for an incident like that, which could happen again. There's no question about that. So that's the number I'll throw out there as a benchmark for free balance. In regards to the projected surplus, I guess what I'm hearing is, the big variable is the weather. And you can't predict that. If we have cool summers going forward, that number's going to drop substantially. It will drop, correct?
I'm kind of predicting cool summers already, Bob, with 22.4. So to me, it looks, to me, the out-year numbers of estimating 8 million in surplus, and right now, in our budget, we have 7 to 7.2 million being used. That could change in January, February, and March. That's the council's decision to decide that, but I'm just using 7 million going forward. So to me, there's a million, my estimates are showing a million, and it could be more. Like you said, if it's a warmer summer, all of a sudden, there's going to be more to give. And, you know, if, let's say, if we pegged free balance at a million, and at the end of next year, it's 1.5 million, I can't justify estimating another low year. I've really got to kind of estimate higher cash estimates and estimate a higher, so that, that line five, cash collections, I think I'm going to need to push that up. And that'll be the lever to be able to help us manage free balance, so it doesn't keep kind of getting out of control, because I'm being too conservative on my-
Correct. Okay, now, in regards to that chart, where you show the different towns, the groupings.
Okay.
One thing that's interesting there is, and what would really make a difference with the kind of lifters, what Pat said and what Ben said is, yes, some of those towns look very low, but I would be curious to see what services those towns provide out of, go back one, I think. There you go. There are those towns in the middle that those numbers look very low. What services do they provide, and do they pay extra for those services? Because that'll help put Madison in perspective with those towns.
Do that chart that I did for our neighbors, do it with these people. I'll try to, I mean, Sussex Rural, just so you know, is a rural electric cooperative that serves a number of towns, so I'm going to take them out of the mix, because-
Yeah, Bob, just, the only reason I asked about Butler is, they were really lower than everybody. And I'm just wondering if they're doing something that we should be looking at, too. I wasn't looking at, you know, because they've acknowledged that the middle group are people who are not using money moving to the municipal budget. So, you know, they're either paying for their taxes or not getting it. But it, just in terms of the amount, the ability to deliver at a really low price, something we should investigate.
Certainly will.
Understand.
I hope that number's right. Pretty sure it is.
In regards to the 2.2 million dollars, I think it's on maybe the next slide, where you talk about, yeah, that one. If we were to, I know this 10% rate cut's been called for for quite some time. If we were to reduce the revenue in the borough by, the revenue collected, by the tax, by the electric surplus, by 2.2 million dollars, how much of a property tax increase would you say that would be? About 8% per house?
I, I don't know, Bob.
I mean, because everything else being equal in terms of the services we provide, the capital-
That'd be 15%.
I think that's the right comparison.
Well, it'll be, my point being that-
Be huge, if it had to happen.
Well, my point is this, and it's very simple. If you want to maintain the level of services that we have, number one, if you want to continue to invest in capital in terms of infrastructure, if you want to continue to support the staffing levels of the DPW and police, which we have right now, you have to pay for it one way or another. And if you're going to cut the revenue stream by 2.2 million dollars, you got to make it up. And the only way you're going to make it up is-
Yes, Mr. Trump?
No. The only way you're going to make it up is-
Bob, please, please. No, no.
Okay. The only way you're going to make it up is by a tax increase, so it's one way or the other.
That's assuming the costs aren't going-
Okay, you'll, hold up just a second. I don't want to avoid this back and forth. Just to re-ground ourselves, once again, a reminder of my opening comments, I, you know, would prefer not having this discussion in the meeting before the elections, but let's try to stay away from any election-type language. Again, what I would like to do, and I'll call in in a second, Rob, I'm not going to, but what I would like to do, and I don't always get to do what I want as a middle child, is, again, let's, a couple of variables or not-so-variables we have is the free balance. The other is to have a discussion on the amount of electric utility surplus used in the operating budget. If it, if it stays at this, basically, $7 million level, then this discussion around shifting $2 million from one pocket to another is a moot point, and we look about, we look at, at what is left after funding various parts of the electric utility. So hopefully, we can get to that point and then get our marching orders going forward. Rob, and then Ben.
Thank you very much. Okay, so again, when I was at Wharton, I had a great professor. His name was Mike Giddens, and he taught us fixed income securities. And he told us that the fear mongers are going to be out there when you want to buy or sell a bond. And they're going to quote you yield to call, and yield to maturity, and holding cost yield, and all sorts of crazy things. But at the end of the day, what matters is what you pay for the bond, what you sell it for, how much interest you receive while you held it, and how much you have to pay to finance it. And that's how you figure out what the P&amp;L is. How does that reflect this? Very easy. Our CFO said he wants to keep a million dollars free balance. If we go by his numbers, okay, which he says are conservative, we will have free balance of $2.9 million next year.
No, on January-
On page 14. At the beginning, at the beginning of next year, January 1st, on January 1st. Therefore, if we were to give a 10% cut to the people that don't, that are paying the highest rate only, so that doesn't include Drew University, the schools, or anyone that's not paying the residential rate, it would come out to be, lo and behold, around 1.8, 1.9 million dollars. So we could accomplish that without having to do anything that my colleague has just said we would have to cut. Thank you.
And that's again, why I want to-
Thank you very much.
Yep. Ben?
Yes. I'll have to go through that. I didn't, I think I followed you, but I don't think I saw all the numbers you referred to. But at any rate-
I want to respond.
Yeah, why don't you do it? Why don't you go first?
I don't mean to interrupt. Rob is right, however, if my estimates of 8 million in surplus generation in the out-years occur, and you do a 10% rate, then we're going to just chew through the free balance and lose it over the course of time. If we average to the middle, it might, it might work. But right now, I'm looking at the differences, and here's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at 8.2 million, you know, these generate, these estimate generates here, estimated generator numbers here, and the estimated usage there. So there's an extra million, 800,000. So from a sustainable standpoint, if you're going to do a rate cut, you don't just want to look at what is available in free balance this year, because we had a really good year. You do have to kind of look at the sustainability going forward.
But if you look at 2018, the number goes from 2.8 to 3.0. So in this case, if we just kept everything constant, it would go from, if we do the cut, it would go from 1 to 2.
I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying, Rob.
I'm doing the math, Jim.
No, no. If you can, you could do a rate cut this year and have 1.8 million go out the door.
For 2017.
But then if you don't do anything, you're going to be in trouble in 2018, because-
Why?
Because this number's going to go down.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you're right. Yeah, I'm sorry. You're right.
That number's going to go down.
I think we have an analysis of that, don't we?
Now, I know Pat's got, you know, a whole bunch of numbers and everything, but-
We're going to go to Pat and then Pat. And just to, again, to guide the conversation, there are strong feelings, dividend versus rate, rate adjustment, that they're not mutually exclusive each other.
You're right. I apologize.
For Ben, please.
Yes, thank you. A couple of things will come up very quickly. First of all, I had a wonderful professor also. He told me all fixed income markets were efficient. So what happened in the interim?
He never traded Venezuelan bonds, right?
But, but the, I do think that discussion that says, here's what we'd have to take out of the budget to pay for this distribution of funds out of the utility- ...with huge services relative to our taxes. So that would be one thing. If you can't justify with the performance of the electric utility as a standalone, then to my way of thinking, you have, you don't have an exercise. The other thing is, we should and need to, and I don't know that you want to do it tonight- ...them in the eyes, so you can make some numbers work. It's ridiculous. Yeah, Pat and Don.
Carmella?
Okay, so, I did my own analysis, because Jim and I had a long conversation on Friday, and I was thinking about it today, and I decided, rather than just try to write something, I'd actually take his numbers and then apply numbers that I thought would work, or could work, depending on a couple of variables, that would result in either a rebate, a rate cut, or both. And I'm not quite sure when it went from being a rebate to a dividend, but I guess they're interchangeable. So to kind of skip to the chase, go to, if you can go to scenario 2B, it's the last table. 2, 2B.
That page eight?
That's page eight. Page eight, yes, I'm sorry, page eight. So it's the last one I did. It is probably, some people say conservative, I say pessimistic in terms of some of the numbers. But it uses, in terms of line eight, the block contracts that Jim had, which I still would like to see the details on how we got to that. And oh, by the way, I did project that one extra year. It uses the transmission rates that Jim had. And then I, the only thing I changed on that line was the cash collections on line five. And I dropped it from, if you go down to the bottom, where it says the average, actually, it should no longer say the average of 2009 through 2016. It should say, it should say the estimate from the borough, where he had 22,500 coming in. I lowered it by 1.6 million, which, in a very conservative way, means I believe that we can lower the rates across the board by 7.1%. And if you go up to the line where it says free balance on 1-1, the lowest the number ever gets is the last year, which I, again, is trying to project out, is 1.67 million. So it's significantly above the number that Jim gave us, which is a million. It's a bit below the number that Bob gave us, which is 2. But I'd like to talk about whether there's any other place we could cover Sandy, other than the electric utility. Because I do think, at the end of the day, the number that we have to do pay the most attention to is the free balance, because everything eventually contributes to that. We should first settle on what we think that number should be.
I'm sorry, I don't-
Why is that?
Because you have a lot of volatility in terms of what you pay for electricity. You have a lot of volatility in terms of how much electricity you will use. Free balance is an important number. I asked earlier what Jim thinks it ought to be, because I have no idea how to find it. It's a little bit like when we went around trying to figure out, what is the right amount of capital?
But ultimately, ultimately, you have to find out something.
So all I'm suggesting is that, as Jim said, a million, fine, let's work with a million and go from there. So that number's fixed.
Okay.
But I still, but Jim still is soft on his predictions going in the out-years, not because, not because he isn't good at this, because he's being asked to predict a lot of different things. Any moving parts on that?
No, I completely understand that. And again, as he said, he's very conservative, and what I would say is pessimistic. You, but ultimately, to do whatever we do, looking at budgets in the long term, you know, strategic planning, we have to do some ports, as I said, can change around, but all of them end up driving that free balance number. And I think it is essential to us that we keep it at some significant level, so that we don't put ourselves in harm's way, because that is our safety net in a lot of ways.
I don't disagree with that. But I will say, and this will probably surprise you, but I'm on your side, right? I think the electric utility is performing as well as we've ever seen it in a long, long time. And to the degree we continue to support our budget the way we have, and yet have money to distribute, is a wonderful thing. We'd like to also see us rely less on the electric utility than we have been, right? But you can't do that overnight. And I think we should have that as an objective. So what I get out of all this, including what I've seen, the little bit I've seen of what you've done, because I got it just a little while ago, is that it's very hard to predict what that number should be. So why don't we adopt what businesses adopt, and talk about a dividend as opposed to a rate cut? You might have a year in which you could give higher than 10%, which seems to be a number that you've liked.
No, no, but at the bottom-
Or you might have a year in which you can't-
But Ben, at the end of the day, the dividend is still going to determine what your free balance is at the start of the next year, correct? Like if you were-
You know, you give it out after the fact.
Oh, no, I understand-
You know how you're starting out.
I understand that, but that's, you're still talking about, how do you, how do you take what you expect to have come in and move it? And we, don't forget, we've built rates for years-
Hold up, I want to avoid-
So let me finish.
Yeah, let Pat finish, and then we're going to go to Carmella. But I want to avoid the back and forth, so, and then to Austria, yeah.
The bottom line is, for years, we've, we've had to pick rates that we thought were going to be sustainable for a period of time.
Correct.
And so that's what I tried to do here, is not drive it down below, actually, a million and a half, not even a million. If you want, if you went to a million, you could drive the rate cut even further. So the next page was just my summary of all the things that I thought came out of this. One is which a rate cut, whether or without a rebate, could be done without raising taxes or cutting capital or endangering our bond rating. I thought the rate cut could be in, at a minimum, seven or higher. We can decide how allocated, you prefer doing it across the board. If we did it, we, but we should discuss that, because we have a lot of different rates that we offer. And again, residential rate-
My final question is, my final question is, I think there is money there to return money to the taxpayers without having to raise taxes, without having to cut services.
We can do it if we had to.
Okay, but I mean, that's been one of the issues that has been the pushback, is that if you do any type of rate cut, you're going to have to raise taxes by 2.2 million dollars.
Well, with all due respects, when a couple of years ago, you proposed a 10% rate cut, we had adopted it, that you had not done something very dramatic with taxes, we would have had to cut some services. As much as we asked, I never heard what services were getting, going to be cut.
Actually, if you had followed the budget outline that I gave you, we probably could have done it without that much pain.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to, again, just, I, we hear a level of agreement, so we're going to not lose that topic, and it's just a matter of how we get to the finish line. Carmella and then Ostry.
Listen, you guys can go around and around with these numbers, but I have to tell you, it's a little, it's a little bit more than, than just all of these numbers. First of all, we don't know what a capital budget is going to be like next year, do we?
We have a pretty much, pretty good idea of a.
Okay, so, so what is the capital budget?
About, about four to five million, right?
Same as, as about what it has been, which is a very important factor. I mean, some of us sat at the joint meeting the other day, and I listened to what has to happen down there, okay? And I'm awfully concerned. I, I thought I would have a rash by the time Mr. Bradley got finished with us, because there's a lot. And when something breaks down there, we're talking a million dollars, a million dollars here, a million dollars there. I mean, it's, you know, my question finally to him was, let's knock it down and start all over again, because that's how bad it is. We, we have to take that into consideration. What, what are we going to do? Are we going to start bonding, or, you know, we've had a pay as you go for a long time, where it seems like we're going to have to increase our debt service down there. So that makes me concerned. I don't want to stop this whole situation with the capital budget. I think that doing the roads is one thing, the infrastructure is extremely important. We, we have water leaks and all kinds of things happening, so we need to pay more attention there. The other thing that, you, you talked about the, the difference in the collection. How often do we see a cushion between the, between the actual revenues and the budgeted expenses? You know, somebody talked about that we very often have a cushion. How often do we have that cushion?
He was being conservative in the collection. He's saying we collect less.
So, but, but that's something as we project out, you know, as Jim pointed out, he is conservative on collection going forward. It's.
Yeah, I think we've averaged like 22.8. An estimate of 2.5. We typically come in at or better than in terms of revenue.
Okay, but let me tell you, I'm going to tell you. Years, is when we go to handhelds, I think that's going to make a tremendous difference. You know, I, I think that we're going to get more accurate readings, and when we go to smart metering, it's even going to be more accurate. So I, I think that, you know, that, that's going to help a lot, too. I, I've been listening to people talk about the electric surplus for years and years and years, living here. And I just want to make this one little comment, that, you know, I've read a lot about the history of these utilities, and I bet this same fight has been going on, I'm going to use the word fight, about whether or not we should use the surplus in this town. And every single council, I don't know, for the last 60 years apparently, has made a decision to use that surplus. So I'm, I'm on the side of continuing us to use that surplus. I also like the thought of a dividend, because anything can help anybody in, at this time of, in this time right now. I mean, when we look at the 150 that just helped the, the senior citizens make some marked difference. So I am going to look at the, the dividend side of this, and I hope that we continue these conversations. And I think that before we start getting this, you know, at a meeting like this, that these discussions are held prior to, so at least maybe we can ask maybe one intelligent question about the situation. So, you know, if we can make up our minds to, you know, bring all of this information prior to a next meeting, I'd appreciate it personally.
Ostry?
Thank you. So I've been on the council a long time, and we do have a healthy balance right now. And I remember a few years ago, when our contracts were really bad, and we didn't have as many choices as we do today. So this is a great position we're in. But all of you have raised questions and issues that are important. And I'm very hesitant to do a rate decrease, because I know what that represents in the minds of people, okay, we're down, so we're going to stay down. I think the concept of a dividend protects the residents, the businesses, and the municipal government from the fluctuations that might occur. So that's where I would like to see us go, is let's do the dividend, and, you know, we see each year how we go, because as Carmella said, we've got some, it was a big surprise with that joint meeting on Monday, and we're going to have some really difficult decisions to make, and we're going to have to come up with some money.
Would like to do this, we'll take another round if necessary, then we'll ask the, for any public comment, and then we'll come back to council discussion as far as next steps. So Bob and then Rob.
Hey, Pat, first, I mean, this is really good, and I, you know, I got it tonight, but I wanted to take some more time to look at it.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'll give you a shout.
I don't make that offer to anybody who wants to go through my thinking on it.
But one thing I want to pick up on that you said, which I think is key, and maybe that could be blended into the discussion at some point, is other sources of revenue like GVR coming online. Of course, we've not really talked about that. And while a dividend makes sense now, because we're kind of like fighting with, you know, what the future will bring, once you can kind of get your hands around what these other users will bring to the table, you know, we have that large pharmaceutical company coming in with 1,300 employees, you have GVR. At that point, and I think, I'm glad you brought up the whole issue of revenue, then you can really start to look more succinctly, have a look, what would make a good, a possible rate cut? You know, kind of do it after the fact, like you have your information, you know what your cash flow is going to be, and you take a look at it. So Pat, thank you for that. Now, I'm going to take a look at this, maybe give you a shout.
Sure. Rob?
Thanks. So I think the benefit of a rate cut is that it will instill some discipline on our budgeting process. You know, if you look back at what happened on the chart on page 15, when the, when it went down to zero, remember, Bob, I was on the council in 2011, and I voted no on the budget because there was nothing in for capital. But, you know, and I spoke a lot with Martin about this last year, and essentially, it seems as though everything was, you know, remember, we, our electric rates used to be lower than most people's, and so, or our property taxes. But then we borrowed a lot of money, something like $31 million for a variety of, of things, to build a building, to do some renovation, to buy some apparatus, et cetera. And, you know, it didn't seem like there was any plan on how to pay it back, other than to rely on the electric utility. And unfortunately for us, there was an oil shock, and even, and look, I was on trading floors for 25 years, so I know that every day, somebody pays the high price for an asset, and somebody pays the low price for an asset. Unluckily for us, we kind of paid the high, and we locked it in for five years. And that just wiped everything out, because we were so dependent on the surplus, right? I have no problem with using surplus for, for capital. I have no problem with using surplus even for debt service. But the, the bottom line is, you know, we're going the wrong way. We're using less and, less and less of our, of our budget is being funded through property taxes every year. This year, I think we were at 46 or 47%. And there's just sort of this increasing reliance, okay, on, you know, on other, on surplus. There are other revenue sources that I think we have to look at. I'm not saying we should just cut this, you know, and not think about, and really make hard choices, because whenever, I promise you that every one of us who sat here and ran said, I'm willing to make the hard choice. Well, we've got some to make, and, and that's something we should think about. But if we're going to go to a dividend model, then the town is utterly dependent on the whim of the council as to whether or not there's any relief. As, as opposed to giving some relief to the people, okay? We're kind of saying, go ahead, spend whatever you want, you know, and then if there's something left at the end, we'll give it to you. Think about the New Jersey homestead rebate. When was the last time anybody got a New Jersey homestead rebate? Because the politicians in Trenton, and we're not the politicians in Trenton, I'm not, you know, please, you know, you know, I, I don't want to say that people at this table are like politicians in other parts of the world, but, you know, they couldn't control themselves. They couldn't control spending, and so it went away. And I really think, you know, that people need some, they need some relief here. And we need to think about, you know, hard choices that have to be made. And, you know, for that reason, I really think that we need to give some of this money back. And I, I'm sure everyone has the best intentions and will want to give things back, but, you know, if, if we cut the rates, then we'll have a little bit more impetus to actually make it happen. I'd love to see the percentage of the budget, you know, that, that we're, that we're financing through taxes go up in accordance with what the Strategic Planning Committee says, opposed to going the other way. And this is a great way to start. Thank you very much.
Ben?
Yes, thank you. Which is to give money back to the people of our town when we have it to give back, and we don't.
You mean dividend, not rate cut?
No, rate cut.
Oh, cool, you're talking about rate cut.
Yeah. But, but with a dividend, we do it in a way, see, I told you I was going to. In a way where it's, where it pushes the business. So the question is, do you want to use the way of giving money back to make the electric utility more like a business? Or do you, or are you worried about what future councils might do with regards to changing rates? And my vote is, I want to see the utility operate more as a business, and they're going to be more efficient if the outcome of a good year is to hand money out in the form of a dividend.
Pat?
Driving the costs down, so residents get a better break on what they pay. I just want to be sure that people understand, again, that.
Which is to give money back to the people of our town when we have it to give back, and we don't.
You mean dividend, not rate cut?
No, rate cut.
Oh, cool, you're talking about rate cut.
Yeah. But, but with a dividend, we do it in a way, see, I told you I was going to. In a way where it's, where it pushes the business. So the question is, do you want to use the way of giving money back to make the electric utility more like a business? Or do you, or are you worried about what future councils might do with regards to changing rates? And my vote is, I want to see the utility operate more as a business, and they're going to be more efficient if the outcome of a good year is to hand money out in the form of a dividend.
Pat?
Driving the costs down, so residents get a better break on what they pay. I just want to be sure that people understand, again, that.
utility. I would agree with you that we would have to analyze, analyze the idea of. Resolve, or having a resolution that, you know, this is our intent to, to give back. You know, if we establish a certain level of surplus that's necessary for, you know, whatever expenses we need.
Just, just to capture that thought, if a dividend moves forward. How it'd be calculated.
My conversation is going back to what Rob just said, he's, something about a dividend is at the whim of a council. I, I disagree with that, because a rate cut is going to be at the whim of a council. I don't think that, I mean, some, that is, that is something that has to be looked at on a yearly basis, come January 1, and a decision is made, you know, based on what we've done the previous year, as far as collections and whatever. So I, I don't, I don't believe that there's, that just a dividend is at the whim of a council. I think that the councils going forward have to consider every single year whether it's a rate or a dividend, and it will, it'll be the same kind of conversation that's been going on since 1960. You know, we'll have the same conversation in another year or so. I also really believe in going way back to some conversations that happened a little bit ago about either a dividend or a rate cut to, across the board, to all of the, the businesses and the corporations that are in this town. We cannot discriminate against one or the other. We have to give the rate, whether it's your university that's giving us a lot of money. We need to make those people understand that we enjoy their presence here, okay? And we're very fortunate, you know, and we're starting to fill up to all the forms. We can't stop that by saying, hey, listen, I'm going to, you know, you're going to still pay all the rates that. pay all the rates that everybody else did, and our residents are going to get a rate cut." So, I don't believe in that. I think it has to be across the board. And the Board of Education got a nice rate cut this past year. So, in answer to your question, that was one of the things that came out of shared services, and so, you know, they're already there, okay? But, that, those are just a couple of extra little comments I wanted to make there.
Bob, shouldn't we say that several of these people are paying 20% less than the residents? So, even if we cut 6% or 7%, they'll still be enjoying much closer to market rates than the residents?
It's, yeah, so, it's all part of the discussion, yes, okay. Thank you.
So, I don't necessarily, you know, that's why I'm saying, if you're not paying what the top, and I don't care if it's a human being, a company, you know, the Nautilus Diner, if they're paying the high rate, the highest rate, then they should get a cut. But if you're already 20%, 25% under what, you know, think about it, like the guy who lives next to Drew, you know, he pays 20% more than what the students at Drew do, so, you know, if we cut him 5% or 6%, 7%, he's still paying more than Drew, you know, so they should still be happy.
I think anything rate-wise, we would look at other structures. We know that high level, whether it's buying 1,000 cars or 1,000 gigawatt-hours, there's The electric rate dividend, or any of the presentation you just heard, please step forward, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard there, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard? I'm pleased to come forward.
Twenty Rolling Hill. I can't do two things at once.
So, I restarted the clock.
I hate to say this, but this is like repeating history. I'm going to go back to our report that we delivered to you, like a year and a half ago, two years ago. I'm going to quote from pages 12 and 13. "There is a separate committee reviewing utility operations and finances." It sounds like we're in the throes of that, still going that. "Consequently, the committee is not going to comment on this, other than the committee's activities that highlight the borough's historical and likely future reliance on financial support from the two utilities, and to note that the characterization of this support is a subject of considerable debate. Are the utility transfers basically dividend payments to the borough based on its ownership and a return on the capital investment? Or are the transfers essentially quasi-taxes imposed on the borough's utility customers to help pay for borough's custom services, but embedded in the prices customers pay for water and electricity? Or perhaps they're a combination of both views? The foregoing leads to the critical question, would residents be better off with lower electricity rates, but higher property taxes and/or explicit rates fees for services currently bundled with other services at no direct charge?" I think that's exactly the arguments you're going through again and again and again. And I happen to think, talking about a dollar rebate is putting the cart before the horse. I do not see the planning that is embedded, just even going into the 2017. Maybe that's being done. I think when we did our work in terms of analysis, we talked about how the utility would operate, and I think basically functioned, it has to be a bottoms-up analysis, not starting out at the revenue line, but starting out at the bottom line. What are the borough's needs? And that demands another study. You ought to come to a conclusion on what services you're going to have them pay and how they're going to be paid for, how you're going to have them pay for the capital expenditures and the debt services. We have not been on a pay-as-you-go basis for a number of years. We've got a three, almost a $2-plus-million carry forward, pay-as-you-go forward, not pay-as-you-go. So, that has to be dealt with. So, the borough needs have to be essentially established, and then, I think we would then take a look at the electric and water utilities. We have to take a look at what are their reserves for capital expenditures and how those are to be funded. Again, there's another analysis that has to be made and decision embedded in this. Are you going to kick the can down the road to future people? Are you paying it as you use the service of the utility capital improvements? And then, you keep talking about the free surplus. I call it, as we do, I think, in terms of the borough's surplus. It's basically a contingency fund. It's basically there to provide. I think Bob's comment about the Sandy issue, in terms of having to establish a relative number that should be there. We tried to do that with the borough's surplus. We did not reach down into the utilities, but I think that should be done. And then, just a couple of anecdotal reports in terms of that I didn't hear mentioned. I think there is a lot of technology that is occurring, in terms of the way that the need for electric utility is going to be, just an ad hoc, just a side point. This year, we replaced windows in our house. I can tell you, it dropped the need for air conditioning, and it dropped our utility expenditures. The type of, you know, what you want to call it, you know, your air conditioning units, et cetera, same issue. It is going to have a dramatic impact on that top line. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
One other question. This is, as I thought about, this is "Make Madison Great Again." I'm playing on that. Going back, we only did through 2000 and I think four or five in our report, but we actually took a look back into the 90s. I'll give you the percentage that was paid by the utility, the electric utility in those years. 1994, 24.1%. 1995, 26.7%. 1996, 29.6%. The high rate was in 2001, 38%.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Mike, sorry, I'm at 230 Woodland Road. I think it's a great discussion that you're having, an important discussion, and I'm not coming down on one side or the other. My question is slightly different. If you decide for a rate reduction or a dividend, I would like to see a comparison of the rate structure by class of user versus other municipalities, to see if we have a good rate structure. I think that same question can be asked for the Water Department as well. I wonder how many years it's been since you've actually looked at the rate structure by class of user, and whether that rate structure is good no matter what you do. Because this is the, if you're going to do that, this is the time to do it. I don't know whether corporations are overpaying or underpaying, or whether our residents are overpaying or underpaying. As a parishioner of St. Vincent's, I would love to see their electric go down. You know, so, I think you look at this in terms of constituency, and as a council, you've got to make sure that you're being fair to every constituency in town, so as part of this, take a look at the rate structure.
Thank you very much, Mike. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this topic? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Let me just capture a few thoughts and share mine, and then figure out our next steps. I think the most important thought to capture right now is, I want to thank Jim as our CFO, our, you know, Rookie of the Year honors are well in line for you, that all the work you did is very helpful.
Good job, Jim.
Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
And just a reminder to all those in the audience and watching this at a future date, either online or on TV, these are conversations that not too many towns can have, and this is a very well-run town. Of course, one of the great things about elected bodies, we always have different ways to get to the finish line, but the finish line in Madison always has been a great one. The fact we have our own electric utility is a proud thing and has supported Madison so well. The fact that we are AAA-rated community is, out of the 565 towns, there's only 19 that can say that, says a lot about what we do. So, no matter where we end up today, we know we're all working to the best finish line. So, thank you, Mr. CFO, for a great job. I think some of the things we've, I've heard, and just want to test these assumptions, and you can wad up a piece of paper and throw it at me if the assumption is wrong, but we're pretty much talking about a $1 million free balance seems to be a good number to go for.
Can I interrupt you for one second? Tom triggered something. It would be good if we looked at all the surplus accounts to really see what our safety net looks like, because I think, again, it is more than just the electric utility, and so we could start out with a million, but we should probably take a look at our whole portfolio.
Sounds good, and I think one of the underlying themes will be the last line here, is we're not going to solve this tonight.
Oh, no, not at all.
That our transfer this year is basically 7.2 million. I'm not too, I don't think I've heard anything that that, we'll assume for now that that would be holding that same number, as Jim, that as CFO, that's, yup, not going up, not going down. And then, just to share my thoughts on this dividend versus rate cut, and I have talked to people on both sides of the argument, and maybe this is, again, the middle child in me, that I, again, don't think it's mutually exclusive, that dividend makes a whole lot of sense on the volatility part of the electric utility, just as we want to be conservative on collections, and if we are way off and there's, we collected far more because of a summer or whatever it might be, there should be a way to look back and then share that, especially since we promised this spring that we would be addressing this issue before the summer. And if, since we put off the cooling season as far as addressing the rates, we should have a method of sending some of that money back if there's a cushion to do that. The other is on the predictability part of our utility. We are, if some of these charts are correct and there's a cushion that's going to be there, predictable, we don't want to always bring in extra 2 million, for example, and send it right back out again. If it's always going to be 2 million, then let's look at our rates. And one that I've always got on record for, this utility should not be, and this is my personal opinion, should not be in the business of providing cheaper-than-normal power, that we want to help people make wise decisions and help people protect our earth and charge competitive rates. And, you know, how Butler does it, I don't know, but maybe their policy is, we're going to sell it cheap as possible, and that might be their way to do it, but it certainly would not be mine. So, those are my quick thoughts. I think what we need to come back with is some revision in charts. I think we can, from Pat's work and Ben's work and Bob's work and others, feed some information, or CFO, to come up with the various scenarios of rate action only, dividend action only, and possible combination, and have draft ordinances that can be discussed at the next council meeting, and whether we may not be ready to introduce, but if we discuss it, then they'll be ready to introduce at the second meeting in November. Any other thoughts as far as next steps?
I just really think we should pay attention to what you said as pertains to the environmental aspect of it, because if you think about it, perversely right now, the way that we fund ourselves would penalize someone who makes the investment in green technology. Because if everybody went out and changed their windows, I put in high-efficiency furnaces, insulation, and let's say everybody did that, and as a result, in the summer, we used 20% less electricity. We're so strapped, because we're using so much of the surplus to fund ourselves, we would have to raise taxes, to make, potentially raise taxes, and so we penalize the person that makes the investment in green technology. So, we really have to think, you know, because that's just the way it is. If we use 20% less, our revenue goes down by 20%, that's where it is. So, when we're thinking about the rate structure, maybe we should think about, and this is, I'm all about rebates, you know, actually, in addition to the state rebate that you get for, you know, the energy-efficient stuff, think about a local one, too.
One other question about con for dividends. Somebody moves out mid-year, three-quarters of the way through the year, who gets their dividend? The person who was living there or the person who moved in?
I've discussed that with Jim, and I will tell you again, you got to read this, but one of the cons I have on dividends, trying to be as objective as possible...
Oh, I did see it. You know what, you haven't, I missed it. I saw the first, or complex to administer.
It's a complex to administer. It would be much harder than just saying, "This following year, the rates will be X percent lower than the preceding year." There's no question. But it is doable, and it's doable at a cost that makes sense. I mean, I'm convinced of that, having spent some time with Jim discussing it. If it turned out that that somehow wasn't the case, we'd have to...
That would be one thing I've been interested in seeing, is, because I have thought about the fact that if we have to administer, especially if it was a large dividend, let's say this year, we decided we're going to end the year at almost 2.9 million, we want to give back 1.9. That's going to have to be, for some people, I think, spread over multiple months, and that's going to be a lot of work for somebody in the...
What do you mean, spread over multiple?
Well, because, you know, you wouldn't be able to zero out somebody's January bill, especially with electric.
No, you'd write, you'd cut them a check.
You're going to cut them a check?
Actually, I thought for you...
It's for next time, right?
Yeah, that would be for next time. I thought it was going to show up, I think, yeah, well...
Now, dividends just got worse.
Yeah, since Jim just left the room, we won't cause him to lose any more hair. Ray will capture that as far as presentation on the logistics. This is, the idea of a dividend program is something new of these for the, I think we might be the first of the municipally-owned utilities to try such a program, so we'll have Jim come back with some of the logistics on that.
Yeah, I thought Jim had talked about rebating it, you know, against the future bills, and I was asking really hard.
Yeah, my conversation with him was just that, just as, because I let my PSENG gas bill pay automatically, and I got way ahead of it, you know, I'm going to be heating my house up to 90 degrees for the next four months because I got so much credit, you know.
You can set that up to pay your bill as it's due and what you owe, not some fixed amount.
You know, just...
You had to do that.
We'll talk on the side so I can get my billing, okay.
As a very quick point, neither one of these processes, reducing rates or declaring dividends, are not without problem, right? There's not one that's, you can say, "Oh, that's easy and we should definitely do it." They both have their issues.
Correct.
We have to figure out what it is we want to accomplish and which one gets us there first.
Okay. Will we move on?
Thank you very much for a very productive conversation. There are no ordinances for hearing because of the short turnaround between meetings, so all the ordinances that were introduced at the last meeting will be back in November. And so now, we're on to our second of two invitations for discussion. This is when you may come up and comment on any topic. Again, please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Maureen?
Sorry, Maureen Byrne, 49 Albright. This is a very difficult subject to discuss. It has its pros and cons, it has its advocates on both sides, but what I saw tonight was really optimistic. I saw seven people in a room on different sides of an important topic, discussing it logically, discussing it convee-veally, and without ranker. And for that, I'd like to say thank you, and I hope it continues into the future.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. There are no ordinances for introduction. Consent agenda resolutions, will your clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted...
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolutions 301 through 309.
Second the motion.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Walcoch?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers, please.
Public safety, $58,461.24. Health and public assistance, $2,756.22. Public works and engineering, $113,928.75. Community affairs, $10,049.8. Finance and borough clerk, $5,171,744.82. Utilities, $613,254.10. The total is $5,970,194.22.
I move the vouchers. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walcoch?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Under new business, I'd like to make the following appointments to a Affordable Housing Ad-Hoc Planning Committee. This is to, this team is to work with representatives from the planning board and also our professional, uh, team in, uh, putting together Madison's affordable housing plan. And council members Ostry Bailey, Pat Rowe, and Carmela Vitale. They have a, uh, motion to accept those appointments.
I'll move it.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all the other new businesses, may the best of the two teams between the Indians and Cubs that have not brought home a championship in decades win. And so with that
Well, not to crack you, but it's better than not best. And with that, a move we adjourn.
It's going to be the
Advisory, Housing Ad-Hoc, Affordable Housing Ad-Hoc Advisory.
I just want to get it straight.